Good morning. It's nine o'clock, so we'll call the July 8th, 2024 Planning Commission to order. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on July 16th, 2024 at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers, which are located in the back of the room, if anybody would like to speak on an item. Roll call. Looks like everyone is here, including two new Commissioners and Commissioner Lassiter from the Board. First item is election of officers, so I'll open the meeting for nominations for Chair.
Would you like to nominate Karen McGregor for Chair?
Second.
Okay. Would you like to do it by ballot or by vote?
You have to ask whether we have, if anybody else wants to...
If anybody else wants a nomination, sure.
We usually do it by acclamation. It's been done in the past.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other nominations, so roll call.
Charlie?
Four.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
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 Travis?
Abstain.
Aye.
Looks like it's unanimous, so I'll turn it over to Karen McGregor, the new Chair.
We also need to elect first Vice President and second, excuse me, Vice Chairperson and second Vice Chairperson. So I would open the floor to nominations for Vice Chairperson.
I nominate Michael Lewis to be the first.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations?
Questions?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
And we also have to appoint or to select a second Vice Chairperson.
Madam Chair, can we pause for a second? We have the panic alarm. Someone hit the button. Can we back up and see if...
Okay.
So the officer can disarm it.
And say, I don't think I touched it this time.
I don't have one, so that's a good thing.
There's one there.
Is there one?
It was pushed in.
It was.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Somebody must just notice.
Well, that was exciting.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we know it works.
All right, I'd accept nominations for the second Vice Chairperson.
Charlie?
Are there other nominations for second Vice Chairperson?
Do I need a second?
Sure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And I abstained.
You abstained, okay. I thought maybe you were just abstaining for me.
Nope, abstaining. This is y'all's board. We're just here, you know, with y'all, because we rotate through, so.
Okay, thank you. The minutes were in our packets. If you've had a chance to read your minutes, I would take a mo... Has everybody reviewed the minutes? And I would address a motion to approve the June 24th minutes.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the June 24th minutes. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signaled by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Agenda item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review 14-19 for Mark and Norma Bruin to review an accessory structure prior to a primary structure. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 14-19 with conditions. Agenda item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review 23-16 for Lynn Messersmith to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends to approve Conditional Use Permit Review 23-16 with conditions. Agenda item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review 23-26 for Mike Wagner to review a motor vehicle rental operation in a highway service district. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 23-26 with conditions. And lastly is agenda item number eight, which is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review 23-05 for ANCO Development LLC to review a telecommunications tower and a plan unit development. And staff recommends approval of Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review 23-05 with conditions.
Would staff like any items from the consent agenda removed?
No, ma'am.
Would the Planning Commission like any items from the consent agenda removed?
Madam Chair, number seven.
Are there any others that the Commission would like removed? And would any audience member like an item from the consent agenda removed? The Chair would address the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number seventeen, or seven, excuse me.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as submitted, with the exception of seven. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Cody, I just got a question. When we originally approved this, this went round to a couple of different ways of presenting. I thought we had something in there that the trailer could not continue to be used as an office after the first year.
Chris Stackver, Planner, I'd have to look back on that. I don't think it was ever added into the conditions. I know he said that this was a temporary spot, that he planned on finding another spot. And he is working with our office. He's got an area in mind that he's working through. It sounds like some plans to do some things on, but he's just trying to get his ducks in a row on that before he puts in an offer. He does have a building permit now for that trailer. And with that area being floodplain, we would prefer something similar to like a trailer that could be hauled off.
Okay.
Quickly, as a temporary structure that's permitted in the floodplain.
That's at the location he's reviewing right now?
That, no, that, so the trailer right now, the property that's on, that trailer would be in the floodplain.
Okay.
So if you had him build a stick-built structure, you would go through the whole floodplain development.
Where he's at right now?
Mm-hmm. And it's actually better from FEMA's standpoint and from our office standpoint for public safety that it's a trailer that can just be.
Yeah, I don't think that came up in the other discussions. I don't remember. Then the second one was, what about the maintenance of these machines? Is he doing that in the back of the trailer, or how is that being handled? We were pretty tough on the rest of the ones we approved.
I'm not, I think they do maintenance off-site. That trailer is just an open trailer with a couple folding tables.
Okay.
And that he just uses out of his office, although all the washing and maintenance, I believe, is done off-site.
He had indicated that before, that it was, they were doing the service in town, or they had some shop someplace, I recall.
Yeah, they have, if you look on their website, like his website, it says that they need to be washed before their return to the site. If they don't, they have to pay the fee, and I believe that fee is for their employees to take it back into town and wash it. There's a car wash just down the road from them.
Is that the same with gassing them up? Do they go to a filling station locally, or...
Yeah, they'd have to. There's, when staff did a site visit, there's no gas cans or gas pumps on that site, so they'd have to fill them up in town.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Conditional Use Permit CUR 23-26 with 19 conditions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think I skipped a step on that one, too.
You're doing fine.
[laughing]
Madam Chair, the only reason that the audience, I guess I was the first one involved, and that was because our legal had advised me and coached me that a court case had occurred. And the single strongest factor in a court case against the Commission like this would be the involvement of the audience. And if we don't make an effort to involve them, the judges take that into consideration, is what I was trained to believe. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Item number nine.
Megan Telman, Planner. Agenda item number nine is Conditional Use Permit COCU 24-0019. It is to allow a home occupation, specifically a woodworking business, on the subject property. The applicant and owner is Mervyn Hilty. This is located pretty far south down the end of Assurance Lane. The current zoning is agriculture zoning. The existing land use is vacant and residential. They have just obtained their building permits. There is no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of Conditional Use Permit applications. They are shown on the screen. As stated previously, the applicant has obtained a building permit for a single-family residence on this property, and also for an approximately 7,000 square foot shop building. They're requesting to utilize the shop as the woodworking business site. The applicant will primarily be making sheds in the structure. There will be no electricity supplied to the structure. Assurance, their access from Assurance Lane will need to be improved to ordinance 14 standards. As it has not been improved, the access road is shown there. But during the site visit, staff noted that construction has not started on the shop yet. They did do some dirt work. But staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 24-0019 with 16 conditions. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I'm just, again, it says that there's not going to be any electricity. Is that really reasonable? How are they going to do anything without electricity, or will it come later? That was my only question.
Their particular lifestyle doesn't allow for electricity. But their shop has a lot of windows, yes. So in the diagram of the shop, all the squares along the side, those are all windows.
That's what I figured, okay. So just daytime work, no electricity?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. Megan, and it's kind of twofold. Is your applicant aware of the true meaning of this ordinance 14? Because we're, if you read what the Highway Department wrote, one, they may have to go through a vacation of some land if they move it to the section line. I thought it looked like it was on the section line already from the fencing, but...
So that access is actually not along a section line?
It isn't.
No. It is, it's pretty far off from any section line. They won't have to move it over to a section line. They won't have to vacate a section line. The easement has been recorded with the Register of Deeds.
All right.
It's just that they need to improve it.
Do you understand why I bring these up? Some of these people are in shock what a section 14 road, you end up pretty close to the road when you see what it costs to build it.
Yes.
14 standards. Okay. Thank you. As long as they're aware of it, I guess it's their choice.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I have one, Madam Chair. No retail in this operation. How are they selling their sheds?
It's my understanding that they'll actually have someone with a trailer come down and pick up the sheds and then take them off-site. So they'll build the sheds within the property. I'm not sure if it'll be request. I know that they will have stock at some point, in which the sheds will be located outside of the structure. They have to be removed within 180 days. But they will have a trailer coming in to collect the sheds and remove them off the property. That's my understanding of the traffic that will be on the road. Whether they have people visiting or not at this point, I don't know.
I was looking at the thing about guest traffic. That's why I wondered just what they were talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing is on recommendation number four. What does that mean?
So any shed that's constructed within the structure needs to be removed over the property within 180 days, since that is the, that's the amount of days we have under our allowing a temporary structure. So we would consider it temporary.
So in other words, if they have three or four of them sitting outside on blocks, they have to have them removed within 180 days?
Yes.
Okay, that's what it is. All right. Yep. That's all I've got, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion from the audience? The Chair would address the motion to approve.
Go move.
Second. Any further discussion?
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, item number 10.
Agenda item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit COCU 24-0020, and is to utilize the existing residence as a caregiver's residence. The applicant and owners are Pamela Phillips and Wayne Goldsberry. This is located at 2465 Covington Street. Their current zoning is suburban residential. The land use is residential. There's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of Conditional Use Permit applications. They are shown on the screen. This is, the applicant is requesting a caregiver's residence on the subject property. They're looking to plant their two properties together. And in order to do that, they need this Conditional Use Permit in place, as they will be planning through the city of Rapid City. From how it was explained to me, it's a lot consolidation, so there's not a lot of review. To have this in place will make the process move faster. This is primarily so that they can get a building permit on the garage that's in between the two lot lines of the two properties they will be combining. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit COCU 24-0020 with nine conditions.
Any discussion? Any questions for staff?
Madam Chair, just one question. When they do the planning process through the city, will then, does that affect the utility easement?
It will remove the utility easement, yes.
It just wasn't totally clear in there. I thought I understood it that way. I wanted to make sure, because otherwise the problem would continue on for them, and I didn't want that. Thank you.
Question. Are there any other questions? The garage that's over the lot line, was that, did I read somewhere in here that this land was split at one point, divided into two? It looks like the...
It was. It was divided to, it's, we're going a bit in circle here. So it was divided to put the single wide mobile home on the property to the north for them to provide care to the owner's mother. The garage was built in 2018, I think, 2018, 2019. And with the previous Conditional Use Permit, they went around and around. They said that it can stay there. It's under the same ownership. That Conditional Use Permit was no longer needed, so it was ended. And now, for the garage to remain there, one of the options that they had was to remove that property line, so consolidating those lots.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission? I have a speaker request form from the owner. Please introduce yourself.
Wayne Goldsberry. We were told that we had to split our property to make that happen for our mother-in-law's home there. We understand that she had to move, if she died or moved, we'd have to remove that. That is a carport with a garage door on it. It's staked into the ground with rebar. It's not a permanent structure. With that, we've also been going back and forth with them about the south approach here. And they want us to get a permit for that. Well, that was there when my wife bought the property. Had nothing to do with us. It was put in when Covington Street was redone. So I don't feel that we need to go any farther with that part of it. The second thing is, we have went to get permits for that little carport, and they won't give us one. I understand it goes over the property utility easement. It's just her, she's 86, 87 years old. She ain't going to be there much longer. So to remedy, they wouldn't let us put it in front, which, okay, we have nowhere else to put it, so she can park her car and put her belongings in it. There's no way to move it around back due to all the landscaping and huge trees. So, that being said, we're more willing to pay the building permit for it and leave it there. There are no utilities that run down that easement. They're all off the back or down the side. When my wife went to do this, every time she came to your office, it was a different story of what we had to do. We paid thousands of dollars to do this. To remedy this, we are willing to pay the thousands of dollars to put it back to one plot, okay, to make this all feasible. I put up a carport, well, to go on, PJ came out and told me it was all good. So we decided, okay, that's all good. He also told me I had let him know I was putting up a 20 by 40 carport to park cars in and stuff. He did not tell me I needed a permit. He says, yeah, it should be no problem. Go ahead and do it. It was actually going to be bigger. And PJ said it was all good. He didn't let me know I needed a permit. My bad. I should have checked. I'm more unwilling to pay for the permit on the other carport we put up. But that south approach, that was there. That was when the county had Covington Street. I'm not going to do anything with that. I think that's unreasonable to ask me to do. This has been a fiasco since we put our house in and cost us lots and lots of money. We are more unwilling to comply. We're making a nice property out there for you guys to tax us on and do our deal. Our taxes are always paid. I just really think this is costing your taxpayers a lot of money, me and my wife. It's a pretty simple thing. PJ told us everything was okay. And now you got a new person in there, and now we're having to spend thousands. And I don't know, I'm sure you guys are all aware of what it could cost to replot, $5,000 to $7,000 by the time we buy all the permits and do all that stuff. That's a hardship, especially with, if my wife would have been given the right information when she came in the first time, the first time we plotted this. The two carports, we have no problem paying for a building permit and the late fees or whatever, but we were also told by PJ it was all good. So with that being said, I think a lot of this has been really unreasonable and could have been handled a lot better.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Got a question for Wayne. Wayne, I think, in the past, the city, and I've sat on here a number of years, I understand what you're talking about on that approach. And some of the things that the current planners would be tied to are different regulations about approaches. We used to put approaches side by side and allow cars to loop through them, so to speak. They don't do that anymore for safety reasons and whatnot, and I understand.
I do understand.
But I think if you wrote it down, that this thing was there, and it was grandfathered. I've not seen...
We bought the property like that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But I think if you address it that way, and they make sure that it's shipped to the Highway Department, that way, they follow the instruction of the Highway Department on approaches.
We already have done that, my wife here.
And they won't recognize that...
I'd like to introduce myself. I am Pam Phillips. I was the original owner and bought the place and all the other things, and went and started this whole thing back in 2017. I filled out paperwork out. I spoke with Mark Flick about the approach, and he said, well, with the way that the ordinances are written, you can only have one approach per whatever, so here's his grandfather doing. So we will not do a permit approach, whatever, for whatever reason. So he had sent me some emails. Unfortunately, for my bad, I was doing all the emails on my work computer, and I have since changed jobs, and...
Now, this was in 17?
This was back in 2017. I filled this out.
PJ was the director at that time?
PJ was.
Yeah.
Yeah. And because when I had come in to ask about a residence, a possible residence for my mom, they told me that the caregiver or caretaker thing was not possible because it wasn't zoned agriculture. So I had to subdivide. So we went through nine months of subdividing, going through everything, did the whole smear for everybody, filled out all of this stuff. And the majority of the stuff was never even returned to me and followed through. So now, fast forward, PJ added all of this stuff to the Conditional Use Permit on the single-wide trailer that was needed. And it had been going through the Commission until 2019 was the last correspondence when he came to the house, because Wayne and I got married in 2019, so he wasn't involved in all of it beforehand. So in 2019, PJ came to our residence, looked at everything. We walked the whole property, explained to him everything that we were doing, what was there, because the carport is not mine. It's my mom's. She paid for it. It took her eight months to get it, and they came in, they put it down when I was at work, and, you know, I didn't think anything of it, and she certainly doesn't understand all of this stuff. So they had approached her about all of this stuff. So we're advocating for her, because I want her to be able to live her life out there. I can keep an eye on her, and it's just, it's working for us, rather than she can't afford to be in some sort of a home, and I'm not going to put her in a state home and make her pay for that until she doesn't have good care. So this whole carport thing has turned into a ridiculousness of back and forth and on and on. And PJ, when he came to the property, he said, look, this is what's going to happen. We're going to add it to the Conditional Use. That we're aware of it. There's no utilities. He contacted the city of Rapid City, and I think it's in the very last, and I brought those with me, the very last minutes, that they were aware that it was encroaching. There was no utilities there, so they didn't, weren't going to recommend any type of thing from the city anyway to do anything with it. So that was the last correspondence that I got from PJ when he came to our house, and he said, okay. And then that's when Wayne said, well, we're planning on a carport here. He said, yep, not a problem. That's within your limits with the building permit with your trailer house, with your double-wide. So we moved ahead and did our stuff. Now, fast forward into 2024... Now, fast forward into two thousand twenty-four, revisiting all of this, and I have to start from scratch, and it is gonna cost us about seven thousand dollars to complete all of this stuff. Off of all of the recommendations that came from the office. And the bad part about it is, is when I went in there and they told me that I couldn't do the caregiver, and I had to replat, I replatted everything, I walked in there with my plaid, and I said, and I said, okay, I finally got it all done, and she looked at and she said, you can't replat.
I'm not confused. You mean in seventeen, when you walked in the first time?
Yeah, when I was doing all of this stuff.
If I have a comment, I wanna talk to you.
Yeah, so I so I went and I did all the plating, took it in there, all the all the signatures and everything on there, and I said it on the counter, and I said, oh, you finally got it done, so we're good to go. And she looked at me, she said, you can't replat, you have to do a carrier. So every time that they gave told me to do something, I went and did it all, and it would take months, I wouldn't hear from anyone. And then, once I got it all done, then they would tell me I had to do something else. So there was there was never a given of it here. Like, you know, like, these are the ordinances that you need to make sure that you're in your setbacks, all this other stuff. Nobody went through any of that. Now, I I don't wanna act like I'm completely ignorant. I probably should've gone through the ordinances and read them all, but I did have a conversation with Megan, and I was reading through the ordinances, and she said, well, it's an interpretation. And I spoke with Brittany also, and she said the same thing. She said, well, it's an interpretation. I said, well, then, can I have in writing what the interpretation is of your guys' interpretation of these ordinances for, you know, an accessory building that I can't do an unconforming conditional use or something to that effect, to not be quite such a financial hardship on us? And she said, you need to hire an attorney. So there was another, how many hundreds, thousands of dollars we'd have to pay for an attorney, just to give an explanation as to why we're doing all of this. So it's it's, again, we're willing to do the building permits. I'm willing to just do it. I'm sick of it. I'm just, I'm done. But the thing is that I want something in writing that this is never gonna happen again. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, when when the next person takes over Megan's job, are we gonna have to go through all this again?
Are they gonna come back and say the caregiver isn't good anymore? Now you have to subdivide. PJ told.
Can I weigh in on this a little bit since I started this thing? First off, you are in a stickier situation than most. You're involved in a what you call an overlapping of the city and the county jurisdiction, of which the city is responsible for the plating. And certainly, I don't wanna comment on what PJ was thinking or why he would comment on it. I can't do that. That's too many years ago to do that. I knew PJ. I'm sure there's other people up here that knew PJ's, but I can't comment why he would make those recommendations to you or those comments, so. But I do understand where you're basically going back and undoing what was done in the first place. That part as a commissioner, I can understand, and I have some empathy and some compassion, especially dealing with not only the county, which I like these young folks. They're good planners, and they do, but they are the same as we are. We can't sit here and and vote against written the law just to vote against the law 'cause we don't like it. And they can't apply those same things just because they don't like it. So we are stuck, and that's why I asked about your your approach, because I believe we have the authority and the thinking, and I know Commissioner, certainly, we've got a Commissioner Layz on person here. They've taken hard looks at at grandfathered situations where you bought it that way. They don't want those anymore. I'm sure you're very clear on that.
Well, yeah, 'cause they need me to put in an approach in order to have that other one. I said, well, now you got three. I said, I am willing to have, my my mom's gonna share that other one. So I'm willing to do that. I mean, I I don't, I'm not gonna sit and fight and say I have to have another one.
But what I was going to say is, once I found out from Megan that that the utility problem goes away too, I think they've advised you to head in the right direction. The thousands of dollars, I can't comment on.
No, I'm sure not.
I I'm sure that you've spent it, and I believe you, and you are in a tough.
One else's problem of mine.
But I just want you to know, as Commissioner, I I can't vote against what the the ordinance is, and I think what you're doing here solves the problem. And the only hangup I've got, and I think we can talk about that after you get done, is this approach thing. We can give, as private citizens, direction on the approach thing. I don't think we can do much beyond that from what I read in here, but.
Well, and again, like I said.
Oh, yeah.
I filled this out. It's why does it become my problem that nobody followed through on any other on any other job when I went there in good faith, doing everything I was told, paid for everything, did everything I was told, and here it is right here that I filled out and I and I emailed to Mark Chalk?
Pam, I gotta.
And nobody followed through on it, and now it's my problem again, seven years later.
All I can advise you on is, we sit up here and they do this with good in mind. People don't own property forever. Eventually, you're gone. Eventually, I'm gone. Eventually, you're gone, and it's in somebody else's hands. And that's why these things are established, hopefully to make them better. In this case, it isn't being better for you.
So what do we gotta do with the approach taken out?
I'd let us get to the discussion on it, and we'll see what we can do, but I just want you to know, we can't vote against what the ordinance says while we're seated here.
Well, but there's an, there is also an ordinance there that says that there is a there's existing things in there, then there should be a conditional use on the things that before all of the the new ordinances come up.
Correct.
To be not a hardship on you. Well, I mean, everything that's been done has been a hardship on us.
The commissioners have some latitude on that. We don't on that end of it.
Okay.
Well, like we're, like I said initially, okay, the building permits, tell me what they are. I'll have the money to you tomorrow, cash hundred-dollar bills. That that that's a non-issue, as far as I'm concerned. You gotta let me know what the building permits are, how much it's gonna be. I'll have cash in your in your drawer by the end of the workday tomorrow. As far as, we wanna do things right. We want a nice property. If and when we sell, we wanna get a good, and we don't wanna pass headaches on to the next person, like it's been done to us. My suggestion is, every time you go up top to talk to one of them ladies, each one of them tells you a different deal. That needs to be fixed, 'cause it is real confusing when you come in for permits and you come in to do this, and you're told different things. And my perception of your shirt might be blue stripes on it. His perception, if he's colorblind, he might not even see your stripes. Needs to be cut and dry, not a perception of what Megan thinks. It needs to go by, and I I agree with you. The the law is the law, but that was there when they sold it to us. It was there when the county redid Covington.
Madam Chair, and I'm.
That's that's something to keep in mind, too. That approach should've been taken out when you redid Covington Street. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the by the commission?
Mr. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I got a quick question. Jason, you're familiar with this, and and I know it's not directly their property. However, it's the property next to them. What ended up happening with that piece of land right there on the corner of Haven, Sweetbrier, and Covington? Because I know whenever they realigned Covington, they had a play in it, so I just wanna understand some some stuff, because I know if if we realigned it and we didn't take out that approach, there's some other stuff that went on. Did that ever go, where did it end up going?
So you're talking about this property down here?
Yep, that piece right there, part of drainage.
I believe that got turned over to the school district.
Okay.
Yep.
That was a process, if I remember. It was a process.
Yep, and I don't believe that that had any bearing on on these approaches up here. To have a second approach on there, they're gonna have to work through County Highway. Our office doesn't have anything to do with the approaches. And I believe that they need to go through an exception process to have two approaches on their property, which would also be worked through County Highway.
Have they been have they been instructed on how to ask for a variance through this process, just out of curiosity? Has it even been come up? Because asking for a variance then becomes comes to us, is that correct, Jason?
It'll come to the board, but it comes from Highway. It doesn't come through the planning office.
Right. And and maybe that's the best option, and we sit down and let's navigate through what they need variances for, and then maybe it should come to us through a variance so that we can kind of mitigate through some of this stuff.
Sure, yeah, and we're happy to reach out to Highway and talk to them about it as well.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for Jason, and I've never asked one like this before. Do we have the right as a not to accept that condition from Highway? In other words, it's not part of our zoning ordinance? Commissioners, in other words, do we have a right to have that removed?
Yep, this is a recommendation to you.
That's what I thought.
Conditions are a recommendation to the planning commission if you.
I thought we have it, and I've, I can't ever remember any time I ever thought of going against Highway, but if that's the case, I know why the the double thing. I mean, I have, I'm aware of it from Highway people. I've sat through their meetings, and it's an excellent thought. They shouldn't be doubled. But if they were a long time ago, I don't think you can beat people with a shovel to.
Right, and this may come up during the plating process through the city of Rapid City.
It may come up again, yes.
For sure.
They're gonna look at what we do.
Yeah, the planning commission has a.
Okay.
Has the right to add or delete conditions. They're just recommendations from staff.
Based on that, Madam Chair, and and so that we could vote on it separately, I would make a motion, we remove condition number three.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just a little confused yet. Are you going back to one lot is what you're planning with the city then?
That the only way that we can have for, the only way we can keep our carport is to move back to one lot.
Can, may I, can I ask a question? Are you you still talking?
Go ahead.
Okay. If you go back to just one lot then, the staff at the planning department is not gonna have a problem permitting the unpermitted structures? That's a question.
We won't. We can't permit it right now because it's over property line. If it was just within the easement, we might be able to do some sort of variance, maybe a vacation through the city, but right now, we just, we legally cannot issue a building permit on that garage.
And you will be able to give the applicant specific instructions on those permits?
Yes.
Okay. And costs, cost and conditions?
Yes.
But they have to go through the process of replating it to one lot, correct?
Just for that one structure, yes, they can come in and get a building permit at any time for the other structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
But they could also ask for a variance?
Not on the garage.
Not on the garage?
It's over a property line.
Oh, it's over the property line?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why I ask that is because as I read item number eight, once there's no longer a caregiver that's needed, then they have to remove that structure. Is that something you guys understand?
Yes.
And you're okay with that?
Yes, we gotta move it all. It's just for her to have her car and her personal belongings.
Specifically, that condition would be to remove the residence, not necessarily that structure.
The residence.
Yes.
But we would take that off and put it in the back. It's like a little garden shed or something, and that wouldn't be a big deal, is what we were told. But right now, it's just there for her car, so she has easy access to get in her car. She's eighty-six years old, and to keep some of her personal stuff dry. All this is over a carport. This really is another seven thousand dollars for a carport that only cost six.
Okay, I have a question for you. If the carport is that mobile, can you move it, say, to the end of the mobile home?
I asked her, and she said, no, we can't move it, so it can't be in front of her deal, and then we'd have to take down some big trees and stuff. I just I just spent five thousand dollars on a tree trim last week, so I I propose moving it out into our other. We have a huge driveway. If you see up there, it's huge, but it can't be in front.
Okay.
So, the whole deal is, we've already started this. We've already paid for the five hundred and some dollars worth of letters we had to send out. We got the conditional use deal up. This is, this is happening.
Okay.
I would like to pay those building permits, but they won't let us.
They need to know that we're gonna approve it is.
Yeah, yeah, and I understand. I understand that, but my big carport, PJ told me to put it up, no problem. I owe for that. Tell me what it is. You gotta call me and tell me what it is. I will come down, fill out the paperwork, more than happy to. I'm real easy to get along with, you know? I see so many other deals around this neighborhood that are way out of compliance, and I feel picked on, and I'm trying to do something for somebody of age. That's all this is. We're trying to do a good deed for my mother-in-law, and it feels like we're being horrifically punished, and the the attitude when we came down and and I talked with Megan on the phone was horrific.
All right.
No, 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 no.
Madam Chair?
No, no positions of what we could do to make it.
Sometimes less is more.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair? I'm, I apologize for not recognizing you before I asked a question. I just wanted to say that, but I have one more question. If we're gonna remove condition three about the approach, do we need to make any changes to condition six, 'cause it talks about approaches also?
I hadn't looked at that, Lori.
It says that no additional approach is allowed. Do we need to, like, delete that, or?
I don't think so.
Think it's gonna be okay?
'Cause we've already recognized, and the photos show the one that's there.
There's one there, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And it appears to have been there before, so.
Thank you.
What staff's opinion on that?
And.
Currently, there are two approaches, which would just mean that they can't have a third approach or fourth.
But item number six says no additional approach is allowed?
Yep, so currently, they have two.
Okay.
If they remain at two.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. All right.
That's how I interpreted.
We have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair?
Can I just show you one more, just just so that you guys know, 'cause you guys have this in your records? This is from one of the minutes or agendas from one of the past deals, and there is a very original plaid in there showing the two approaches. There was a single one.
In two thousand seventeen?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, and there was a single-wide trailer that we took on. So this is what the original property looks like, and it should be in your records of what you can see of how I bought the property, if that helps.
Madam Chair, when I look at this, I'm not sure how they would even put an approach on that smaller unit before it's platted there. You know, that just doesn't look like, you know, they're just gonna move from one side to the the north side to the current approach up and move, make that the south side of the approach. What's the option of an access easement? Anybody?
Where would the easement?
I'd put the easement where that north driveways.
So what they're proposing is to remove this lot line and create one lot out of both of those, so there wouldn't be a requirement for an easement for access.
That's if they replat it, but without needing to replat it, can't they just leave things the way they it is and get an access easement to?
I believe there is already an access easement on that property.
I don't believe that there is, is what I'm understanding. Did you guys have to do an easement when you went through it?
Maybe this, the imagery might be off. Perhaps this property line shifts down a bit to provide access to that lot legally. I'm not really sure without pulling the plaque, to be honest with you.
This whole thing, common sense to me, it looks like it just doesn't need to be changed much at all with something simpler than having to replat the thing back to what it was before and a number of the other issues. I would check into that option, see if that is an option, to just do a simple access easement into it and not have to change anything, not have to replat it.
Right, the problem is that this structure is over the property line, though, so the easement wouldn't necessarily solve that for us.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Well, couldn't they solve that by just some kind of an easement allowing for that?
Well, couldn't they solve that by just, uh, some kind of an easement allowing for that?
No, I don't believe so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a comment, I'm going to go with Wayne, he's to the applicant on this. And he said, we're a long way down the road here to be changing where we're at on this one right now. Other than his, his unhappiness with the approach, uh, and then throwing more, uh, financial out there to remove an approach. And I guess that's where my removing number three came from. I didn't mean to confuse it beyond that or, or the access. I just think, and I guess I'm with the applicant here. I think the approach is a, a serious question that, uh, having to spend money to remove it when it's been there, but.
I agree.
Thank you.
I don't see any reason that that should have to be removed. But I guess if replating it into one unit, I don't know down the road how that's going to be an issue. But, um, it just seems like, like what they're addressing, that there's way more things going on here that, that probably I would say shouldn't need to be addressed.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second to approve item number ten, CO CU twenty-four.
No, we didn't vote on them removing number three, Madam Chair, excuse me.
We didn't, okay. All right, that's what, what our motion is, is not, okay, all right.
That's the one that's on the floor, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of removing item number three or condition number three, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right, now, I would address the motion.
I'd move we approve CO CU two four dash zero zero two zero with eight conditions. A second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, yeah, all right, we don't need an executive session that I know of. County Board Report.
Morning again, Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. County Board Report. Uh, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting, with the exception of ordinance amendment twenty-four dash zero nine to amend section nine oh four C for Denon Roads for the subdivision regulations. This item was continued to the July sixteenth Board Meeting.
Do you know what the issue was with?
Uh, there was some verbiage, uh, that didn't quite line up. Um, so we're going to take another look at that.
Thank you. Items from the public? Items from staff?
Uh, so items from staff, we have the building permit report, which I believe you've all been provided a copy of. Uh, everything is tracking, um, either at or below last year's permits when we compare them, except for single family residents, those are up twenty-five percent over last year. And the mobile homes are up forty-eight percent over last year. But like I said, everything else is, um, either below or at the levels that we had last year. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Items for membership? The Chair would accept a motion, would consider a motion to approve the, approve the, or excuse me, to adjourn the meeting.
Salute.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll get this under control.